On the Fairfield zoning board of appeals, January 5, 2023, first, Happy New Year, everyone. And hopefully, we're off to a good start. We have a nice, you know, short agenda here.
You're welcome.
We were working pretty, we had some pretty solid agendas at the end of last year. So it's nice to start a little light this year. We have a couple items on executive set agenda before we get to the public hearing. The first is approval of the minutes from Thursday, December 1. Entertainer motion to approve. Thank you, Brian. Sir, a second?
Second.
Thank you, Elise. Okay. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion. We'll bring it to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Okay, none. Extentions, none. Motion carries. Next item is approval of secretary's fees. Entertainer motion to approve. Thank you, Brian. Sir, a second?
Second.
Thank you, Terry. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Bring it to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? None. Motion carries. And I'll move right in now to our public hearing. We'll be reconvening our working session after the completion of the public hearing. At that time, we'll be voting on all of the items that go forward today, all the applications. I'll be discussing that process in a moment when I do the official call. So now I'm going to call to order a public hearing for the town of Fairfield zoning board of appeals, January 5, 2023. When a matter is called at that time, the applicant would be presenting their case. When you present your case, you're going to go up to the podium here and talk about and tell us about your case during your presentation. And I emphasize that on purpose. During and only during your presentation do you present materials that you want us to consider. Please do not come up here while I'm doing the call. A call is, I'm putting on the record exactly what the applicant is seeking to do, and so I want the record to be clear. So please don't be putting paper on the desk. I'll give you all the time you need to present your application. I'll give you all the time you need to show us documents, to pass them out. But it's while you are making your presentation that I want you to present anything you want us to consider at that time. After the applicant or his representative is finished, we might ask some questions. If we don't ask questions, don't be alarmed. This means we understand the application. We ask questions if we have a question about the application. If there are no questions, I will then open up the hearing to anyone that has a comment about that particular application. I first ask if there's anyone that favors the application. And if there's anyone that wants to speak, I welcome you to come up to the podium again, give your name and address, and tell us what you, what you support or what you like about that application. If there are no one that wants to speak in favor, I will then open it up to people that are against that application. We don't have anyone virtually, so it looks like everyone that is, has a comment is here in this room, which is great. And then, again, if you oppose it, give us your comments. You come up to the podium, give your name and address, and you can tell us what you have to say, what you think and what you feel, and why you want us to possibly reject that application. And that's your time to be heard. If there is any opposition, I will then allow the applicant or his or her agent to address those points in opposition. That is a time for rebuttal. It's not a time for you to restate your application, to go over it again, to repeat it. It's time for you to address the comments that are opposed to your application if there is any opposition. And the meeting is being taped, and that's why I emphasize certain things. So, and it's being taped because that's required by our state law because we want to create a record. So we want to have a clear record. In order to do that, we need to be able to understand the tape. In order to understand the tape, we need to have only one person talking at a time. Okay? So it's someone from the board, it's someone that's up at that podium. And those are the only people that are going to be talking. Either me, here at this board, one of the fellow commissioners, or the person that's sitting at that podium are the only people that are going to be doing talking in the meeting. And welcome the comments and anyone that's interested. And I sincerely mean that. However, I will exercise my discretion as chairman to restrict your comments if you are off the point. This is the zoning board of appeals. What this is, and most of the applications, there are regulations to the zoning board, our regs. People are asking for some leniency as to those, or some forgiveness as the, the application of some of those regs to their particular property or the property at issue. And they're asking us to waive or be lenient. That is our focus, not anything else. It's about the property and how those particular regs relate to that particular property. So that's why I emphasize that, to make sure your comments are on point. If you're interested, and I hope you're interested, to stay after the public hearing because if it takes too long, we'll take a short break, and then we'll be voting, and there may be discussion. And it's very important for you to hear the discussion. Whether it's your application, obviously, that's very important to you. What if you have any interest in it? It's also important to hear what we have to say about it when we're voting. There are five voting members for the zoning board of appeals. In order for your application to be granted, to be approved, you need a super majority. You need four to vote in favor of the application. If it's a simple three to two, your application's going to be denied. Don't worry if you can't stay. There's no penalty if you cannot stay and listen to that. I just think it's helpful. I've been doing this for a while, and I think it's very helpful for the people that have interest in the application to hear what the board has to say when we're discussing that particular application. So, but if you can't stay, please call the zoning office tomorrow or next week to find out what happened. If an application for a waiver is granted, it's not going to be valid until it's recorded on our land records. In order for it to be recorded, you need to send or bring a check to the zoning office made out to the town of Fairfield, an amount of $60. And you can do that Wednesday or later following the meeting. That allows for proper recording of the notice. Any waiver involving construction, whether it's new dwelling, addition, or alteration, requires an ad build before an issuance of certificate of zoning compliance and a certificate of occupancy. Now I'll make the call. Our first item that we have is 244 Greenfield Street, map 42, parcel 51. Petition of town of Fairfield for a variance of the zoning regulations, section 5.1.1, section 5.2.1, and 2.7, to reduce the street frontage and lot square from 60, from 60 feet and 60 feet, proposing 53 feet and 53 feet. Permission to create a building lot for a two-family dwelling premises B zone. Barnhart?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, members of the board. For the record, my name is Mark Barnhart. I'm the director of community economic development for the town of Fairfield. Appearing today on behalf of the town of Fairfield to request a variance of section 5.1.1, 5.2.1, and 2.7, as the zoning regulations reduce the building lot share from 60 to 53 feet, to construct a single detached dwelling for two families. The town, by way of introduction background, the town purchased the property at 244 Greenfield Street this past year for purposes of creating affordable housing. It's a butt property that the town already owns, and together with that, the town has assembled a about a .4 acre parcel, which it proposes to divide into two lots, as detailed in the map that was submitted with the application. The property is in a residence B zone. Subsequent to our purchase of property, we solicited proposals from development partners and subsequently entered into a development agreement with Habitat for Humanity of coastal Fairfield County. With us today are its chief executive officer, Carolyn Vermont, and Kevin Moore, its chief operating officer over there in the corner. I appreciate both of you joining us today for this presentation. Our plan is to, with working with Habitat, to construct a duplex in the property, which would in total comprise four units, all of which would be offered for sale as affordable homeownership units to income-eligible first-time homebuyers. I'm sure the boards are familiar with the work, a good work of Habitat for Humanity, has a strong track record of providing a pathway to affordable homeownership opportunities in the region. They use a nationally proven model that requires homebuyers to help build the house and provide sweat equity, help instill a sense of homeownership and pride, and prepare homeowners for the challenges that go with homeownership. Their goal is not simply to buy, build, and sell a house, but to educate, empower, and engage partner families so that their home is a source of long-term financial health, stability, and pride, as well as an asset to the host community. We selected Habitat, the town did, as its partner after a lengthy selection process. Habitat will not only serve as our general contractor but lender, providing a 30-year interest-free mortgage that requires no down payment, which will help maximize affordability to these income-qualified working families. And since 1985, Habitat has built and renovated nearly 300 homes within the region, helping over 1,100 family members achieve that American dream of homeownership. But this would be the first project that Habitat would undertake within the town of Fairfield, which I think is important. We're requesting, the town is requesting today with Habitat, a very modest decrease in required lot square and street frontage of seven feet in order to facilitate the construction of a duplex on one of the two lots. It's noted that we can achieve the required lot square of 60 feet, but not within the 20-feet front yard setback, which will allow the, the building to actually be set back further from the road, which we think is beneficial. We submit that granting this request will not substantially affect the comprehensive zoning plan of the town, and that this proposed residential use is compatible with the surrounding properties and will harmonize with the existing neighborhood. Strict, we believe that strict adherence to the zoning regulations would create not just a hardship, but would not also serve the public interest in providing more affordable housing options for the area. This lot is fairly unique in its shape and configuration based on the obitting property owner. As indicated, we can achieve the 60 feet elsewhere throughout the lot. In fact, the rear lot is 62 feet. We'll get the 60 feet square, but not within that 20-feet setback from the, from the, from the road. As the, as this board's no doubt aware, the town has a well-documented need for affordable housing. So the town has been working diligently to address that need. Only 2.8% of the town's housing stock is recognized as being affordable by the state of Connecticut. The need is particularly acute as regards, with regard to affordable homeownership units. And of our affordable units, only 44 are deemed restricted as affordable homeownership or starter homes. The median price this past year was $815,000 for the first 11 months of 2022. Obviously, that's not very affordable for most folks that are working families. Of the 680 sales that were recorded in 2022, only three were for less than $300,000, which has been our unofficial barometer of affordability. So with anticipated sale prices for these units of less than $200,000, the four units would definitely help the town meet its residents' needs for affordable homeownership housing. In light of all that, I would respectfully request the board approve the application as submitted. I'm happy to take any questions the board may have at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Barnhart. Does the board have any questions, Mr. Barnhart? Yes, go ahead.
So if we're at 2.8% now, what are we trying to get to?
Well, the state has an unofficial goal of 10% for each community. I have my doubts as to whether or not that would be achievable for a community like Fairfield, certainly given where we are. But there is definitely an acute need for affordable units, so we're doing what we can.
Okay. And then what's the, isn't there like a, an interim percentage that, that would take the threat of predatory?
So there is an opportunity for communities like Fairfield to apply for a moratorium application. These would provide points towards that moratorium application. We're very close to achieving that.
Which is, what's the?
It's based on 2% of the number of housing units as of last census. So in this case, we need 433 points. By my estimation, at last count, we're about 50 points shy.
So when there's an affordable housing development, that just pushes things forward because we're adding more non-affordable units?
When, yeah, when there are projects that don't have an affordability component, it does move us further away. But with this particular project, all the units would be affordable, qualify for moratorium points, would get us closer.
They have the A-3G project, yes, they give us more affordable units, but they also increase the number of per-unit across the town.
Yeah, because an A-30G project, only 30% of the units have to be restricted as affordable, meaning 70% are market rate.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Barnhart? Thank you, Mr. Barnhart. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to this application? We're going to close the hearing on 244 Greenfield Street. Thank you. Our next item is number two, 812 Hillside Road, map 174, parcel 40. Petition of Benjamin Kenny and Megan McDonald for a variance of zoning regulation, section 5.2.4, to reduce the street line setback from 60 feet, currently 32.5 feet, proposing 32.5 feet. Permission to construct attic dormers premises AAA zone.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Beatriz DeSantis, and I'm here representing Mrs. Kenny and Mrs. Kenny. We have a project going on in their house, and it's a, a very simple application. The house was built in 1913, as I recall, and was built within the setback allowed in the AAA residence area. So we are proposing to add some dormers, two big dormers to the back and three dormers to the front, to allow a better living area in the third floor that is allowed as the right in the residence. The dormers in the front are not protruding too much into the building, are very within the character of the style of the house, and also within the character of all the residences in the area. But it will help not just improving the living area, but it's also going to bring more natural light and more, you know, fresh air into the space in order to, to make this area more pleasant and more livable for the, for the family. The other thing that we're going to address, too, is this area here that at the moment doesn't really comply with building code about the head height over the, over the stairs. And the height is within what we are allowed to. We're not increasing the height of the, of the building. The volume is going to be increased, but the height is going to remain the same. These is, these are the two, the three new dormers in the front. And these are the dormers on the side. This is the other side of the property. And these are the dormers in the back. So they are well in balance with the rest of the building. They are not obtrusive to the, to the building. They are not massive comparing to the rest of the building. And like we said, you know, like they, they are within what we've been seeing in the neighborhood. This is the house as it is right now. We don't, we're not going to, like I said, it's not going to be something massive in front of the house. It's going to be delicate. It's going to make the house look better and more within the style of the house. We have other houses here like 81 that has the same style of dormers. This is a good example of what we're trying to do. And we have this house at 701 down the road, and it's about the same volume that we have currently, and it has dormers, too, which is what we're trying to put in the house. I have some calculations about the existing floor area. The existing floor area of the house is at 4,472. We have another project that we already submitted the application for a mother room, and that, that combined with adding the dormers is going to bring our total floor area to 5,942, which is roughly 11% of the floor area that we are allowed in the, in the area, being our maximum 15%. That is our very small, simple presentation, and I don't know if you have any questions?
Thank you, Mrs. DeSantis. Does the board have any questions? Hearing no questions. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Yes, go ahead.
My name is Dabney Bowen. I'm at 317 Vernon Hill Road, on the corner of Vernon Hill and Hillside, right around the corner from the south. And I just wanted to remark that the plans are completely in keeping with the surrounding architecture, both on Hillside Road and on Vernon Hill and other nearby roads. There's actually a house, two or three houses down several years ago asked for a similar permission to do, raise the roof of the house and do dormers. So there's definitely precedent in our part of Greenfield Hill for that. I think that the owners of the house are trying to improve a house that's needed some improvements for a really long time. The constructions they're doing seem very considerate to the neighborhood, and I just wanted to, I'm excited for this. I think the house is going to look spectacular, so I'm all in favor for it.
Thank you, Ms. Bowman. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone in opposition to this application? 812 Hillside. Hearing no other comments. I'm going to close the hearing on 812 Hillside. Thank you, Mrs. DeSantis.
Thank you so much.
Our next item we have is number three. It is 2644 Bronson Road, map 225, parcel 20, petition of Bronson Metals LLC for a variance of zoning regulations, section 5.1.1, to add a second floor to the existing grooms quarters. Permission to construct a second floor addition to an accessory dwelling premises AAA zone. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening. My name is Craig Flaherty. I'm a professional engineer licensed in the state of Connecticut. I'm a senior engineer in principle with Retness and Need, Land Use Consulting Company with offices in Stanford and Wilton, and I am here as agent on behalf of the applicant Bronson Metals LLC to present their application for variance to you. This is a property that, if you look in the upper right-hand corner of the zoning location survey that was submitted in the application, you get the full overview of the property size and the types of structures that are on the property today. It is a 30-acre property in the AAA or two-acre zone. It effectively is used as a residential estate with some equestrian facilities on the southerly side. We were, this board granted two variances in the past that were filed in land records on January 26 of 2016. Those two variances were for, one, the ability to construct and maintain three dwellings on the single parcel, the main house here, a guest house here, and the grooms quarters, which is the subject of tonight's application, here. The second variance that was granted at the time in 2016 was, we did not meet the minimum dwelling size for the grooms quarters. It was a small one-story apartment, about 959 square feet, which is less than the 1,200 square feet that is otherwise required by your regulations. And so we got a variance of minimum dwelling size for the grooms quarters also at this time. Everything was built in accordance with the, these approvals and other approvals through the town. And at this time, they were looking to put a second floor on that small grooms quarters and construct a small addition and entryway to the grooms quarters. So we are not asking effectively for a change in the fact that we want to continue to maintain three dwellings on one property, two of which are clearly ancillary and pertinent to the main house. And in fact, by virtue of increasing the size of the grooms quarters, the second variance for minimum dwelling size, size is effectively not needed and would be extinguished by this new construction. So we're here with an application that would make it more compliant in effect on the minimum dwelling size and would maintain effectively the existing use and arrangement of three dwellings on the existing property. To give you an idea of the plan, so this is the existing footprint of the, of the grooms quarters. This is the location of effectively a one-story addition, which is on the north side. It actually is consistent with a breezeway that currently connects the grooms quarters with the stable. That's going to be slab-on-grade construction in that portion, and a new stair will be built up to what would be a new second floor above the first floor. You see that stair coming in to the new second floor above the first floor, and simple pitched roofs according to that. So the only variance really, it's almost a confirmation of the continuation of the variance for three dwellings on the site. We're here because that grooms quarters was a part of a previously granted variance, and we are altering it. We believe the factors of the board considered in approving the prior variance application are similar or more favorable today. The guest house and grooms quarters are uses clearly pertinent to the main residence. The grooms quarters will now be compliant with section 5.2.6 of the regulations for which the size variance was previously granted. And the property is actually now two acres larger than it was when original variances were granted as a separate building lot, once known as 2550 Bronson Road. Tax parcel 28 was consolidated into the subject parcel in 2020 by eliminating a building lot. The property is 15 times larger than the minimum lot size in the two-acre zone, and the relatively limited use of the parcel evidence is evidenced by the fact that the building coverage on site permitted within the residence AAA regulations to be 10% will be less than 3.2%. And the floor area ratio on site permitted under residence AAA regulations to be 15% will be less than 3.7%. Of course, it's understood that had this property gone under subdivision, there would likely be more primary residences on site than there are today. So approval of the application allows the continued use of the property, and then allows the enlarged grooms quarter to comply on a size basis. Just to give you an idea of the position of the grooms quarters on site, the required front yard setback is 60 feet. The grooms quarters is 129 feet from the front property boundary. The required side yard setback in the zone is 30 feet. The grooms quarters is 249 feet from the nearest side yard. It's not even worth measuring the rear yard. It's so far away. The height of the grooms quarters will be about 25 feet when the regulations allow 40 feet, and the overall size of the grooms quarters will be 1,215 square feet on the first floor with a total floor area of 2,181 square feet. That is the application.
Thank you, Mr. Flaherty. Does the board have any questions, Mr. Flaherty? Yes, go ahead.
So is this going to be re-characterized as an accessory dwelling unit, maybe called the grooms quarters?
A groom that takes care of the horses and animals on the property lives there.
Right. But is the, aside from who's living there, is the, is the size of the building now of a new, could be considered an accessory dwelling with a new?
I have not looked at that.
Okay. And then one of your hardships, please?
Well, it's an existing, I mean, effectively, it's an existing structure. And, you know, the, it's a very small apartment, and they want to provide a separated bedroom instead of a studio apartment for groom.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Flaherty? Hearing other questions? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the application?
Hi again, Dabney Bowen, 317 Vernon Hill.
Dabney Bowen, three one seven Vernon Hill Road in Fairfield. Um, I also wanna state for the record that I am the vice chair of the Conservation Commission. So I am familiar with this property. It's my neighbor. Um, I'm familiar when it filed for the, uh, original building of this home and build out of the property as it relates to conservation. I'm also very friendly with the owner. I'm also an equestrian, so I have, um, insight as to what a grooms quarters requires and what a property like this requires in terms of having a living groom. And, um, and I've been in that apartment. So I want to give a little bit of insight in terms of hardships and financials. Typically, when equestrian properties like this are built out, a lot of times the groom is a single, usually man, typically an immigrant, um, that doesn't need a lot of room. In this case, the, uh, woman, a very skilled and experienced woman, who is the year-round groom for this property, is married. They have two dogs and it's really not enough room for two adults and two dogs. It's really nothing more than a glorified studio apartment. These are two people that have been residents of this area for some time. They may or may not wanna start a family. It's just a really, really cramped situation for them. So, uh, in my view, that's really part of the hardship. Again, as a neighbor, I'm in favor of this application. There's certainly no, um, reason in terms of aesthetics or in terms of FAR or any other issue that was presented earlier for there to be a second story. And I believe if I heard correctly, that originally, uh, the permit, you all asked for permission for it to not meet the minimum, right? So really, this has come full circle. Uh, if a minimum had not been requested before, then you wouldn't be in front of this board tonight. Is that right? Yeah. So really, I think it's just about providing a decent amount of space for a resident of the community who is an employee of the property owner so that they can have a comfortable living situation and so that they have enough room to, um, do what they need to do to take care of the property and the animals on the property.
Ms. Bowman, is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone that wants to speak in opposition to the application? Twenty-six forty-four Bronson Road. There are no other comments. I'm gonna close the hearing on twenty-six forty-four Bronson Road. Uh, thank you, Ms. Flaherty. On number four is one eighty-six White Oak Road, map four-four parcel one-seven. A petition of Heath and Alyssa Kent for a variance of zoning regulations, section five point two point five, to increase lot coverage from fifteen percent. Currently fourteen point eleven percent, proposing fifteen point five percent. Permission to construct a rear one-story addition premises R-three zone.
Hi, good afternoon. Um, I'm Alyssa Kent. I'm the, um, owner and resident, current resident of one eighty-six White Oak Road. Uh, we purchased this property in the fall from a family that has lived there for fifty-six years. Um, and we have a passion for, um, bringing properties up to date and living them with them and then with our, um, our family of five. And, uh, this particular property is on a beautiful road, um, abutting Brookline Country Club. Um, each house is quite unique. Um, and this house is, um, is, uh, a bit dated and, and we're looking to bring it up to the standards of the neighborhood and, um, while also allotting enough space for our family of five. Um, so petitioning for a amendment or, I'm sorry, a, um, uh, uh, appeal to, uh, the zoning code five point two point five to construct a nine-by-twelve, um, addition on the back and a single-story addition on the back and an eight-by-nineteen and a half, uh, foot addition, um, for three stories on the front. Um, this will allow us to expand our dining and primary bedrooms, um, as well as add two more bedrooms into the attic area. The, uh, lot coverage, uh, currently, as we have designed it, goes about a point five percent where they'll allow just allowable lot coverage. Um, and our hardship is that the lot for the R-three, in the R-three zone is about fifteen percent undersized. Uh, we did receive, um, went and had lengthy talks and presented our plans and elevations to each of our neighbors and have signatures from each of them, just five of Butters and the two people across the street. Um, it allowed us to have a really lovely introduction to the neighborhood, um, each person being kinder than the last. We're just really thrilled to have a young family, uh, in the neighborhood that, um, uh, kind of enlivened a, a house that's been quiet for a while. I think you guys all have copies of, of the plans and elevation.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
And, um, we're excited to get started and hoping that we would, um, uh, approve this, uh, appeal.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Kent. And, and if you could just, if you have the petition there, if you could just give that to Mr. Decker?
Sure.
That's part of the record. You have to do that right now.
Yeah.
Uh, does the board have any questions for Ms. Kent? Okay. Uh, hearing no questions. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone that has opposition to the application? One eighty-six White Oak Road. All right. There are none. Before I close the hearing, why don't you just, uh, hand that in, Ms. Kent? Before I close the hearing, let's hand that in. All right, now I can close the hearing on, uh, one eighty-six White Oak Road. Thank you. Our next item is number five. Uh, five ninety-three Roland Road, map one-three-eight parcel two-two-eight. Petition of Nicholas and Megan Lilo for a variance of zoning regulations, section five point two point four point three, to reduce the street line setback for an accessory structure on a corner lot from thirty feet proposing twenty-three point nine feet. Permission to construct an in-ground pool premises A-zone. Go ahead, sir.
How are you, sir? Um, I'm James Vodas, owner of Marquee Pools in service, and, um, I'm representing Megan and, um, Andrew, I'm sorry, sorry, I'm wearing glasses.
Nicholas and Megan.
Nicholas and Megan, yeah, that's somebody else on my head. I also have some packages I can give each member, so I made that up, so you let me know when you're ready for that. So, yeah, so they wanna, uh, construct a, an in-ground fiberglass pool. And being on a corner, not conforming lot, it makes it difficult to meet all the setbacks. So we can meet the setbacks off of the rear and sidelines, but we can't meet the setback off of the street. So, um, at this point, the, the pool is a little bit short, uh, meeting that setback, but it's also in line with the front of the house, which is also, I think that's twenty-four feet and the pool's gonna be a little bit more. So, um, it's really pretty simple. It's not that, that hard to do. The pool will also be built at grade level, so I don't think it's gonna be obtrusive to anybody on the heights of the pool. Uh, on the plan, it does show a stockpile. There will be no stockpile there during the construction. And she's constructing the pool because of, um, everything will be hauled out of that property during the construction of the pool and then bring in additional stone to do that. And the only other thing on there is the pool equipment pad that'll be on the back of the house. And I, in that package I have, you can see where I have that. Um, again, it, it meets everything but the rear setback by two feet, so I can show you that.
Okay. All right. You can present whatever you want. Have we, we?
Ready?
You have plans? Yes.
Yes. So what I did was, is, um, I went out and put the pool to scale per the, uh, all the setbacks and the sizes. And you can go through all those pages and you can see, um, how it does fit in the yard and, and keeping it at that grade. If you go to, I believe it's page six, let me double check that. Page six shows the equipment pad on the side of the house there. And again, you could just, it's just, there's really no room to put things anywhere else to hide them. So, um, at this point, right there would be the best space for that unit.
All right.
And, and there's, there is also, I believe, you have the, uh, all the neighbors signing off.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, are you finished, Ms. Vodas?
Yeah, I don't know. It's really not that complicated, so, um, I think it's pretty simple.
Let me see if there's any questions for you. Does the board have any questions?
Are you speaking a, going to the pool and then had it done?
Yes. So I believe the pool meets the setback off of the street. I mean, I'm sorry, the equipment pad meets the setback off of Edward Street. But when the surveyors did the, uh, this design here, they made the pool at five, uh, the pad five by eight. And it's actually gonna be three by seven, so we're at four point, um, five off of the, the property line to the edge of that equipment pad.
Is it at grade?
Yes.
How's that grade?
It's at grade. It's on, it's on that page seven. You can see it would be at grade. Everything's at grade.
Okay. Thank you.
So there's not a, not a variance needed for?
No, the equipment pad.
Any other questions? All right, hearing other questions? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone in opposition? Five ninety-three Roland Road. All right, I'm gonna close the hearing on Roland Road. Thank you, Ms. Vodas. Next item is number six. Eighteen thirty-eight Black Rock Turnpike, map seven-six parcel one-six-nine. Petition of Joe Paul Berger, Berger, for a variance of the zoning regulations, section twenty-eight point six point twelve, to reduce the required parking spaces by eight. Permission to convert retail space into a restaurant premises DCT zone. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Eva Cornrice with Angel Commercial. I'm the broker for the, um, the owner as well as Shumi Revolving Sushi, which is the restaurant looking to go into the space. So it's a fifteen-hundred square foot retail space in a, in a plaza on Black Rock Turnpike between Burrows and Katona Roads. Approximately fifty percent of that space will be used for customer seating, so it's about seven hundred and fifty square feet. And based on that, we're told they need fifteen parking spaces. The lot is parking and common for all the retail establishments and there are something like fifty-two spaces, I believe, as you have the map in front of you. But we only have seven that are specifically allocated for this unit, so we need eight more for them to be able to operate. It should be noted that their hours are primarily lunch, which is eleven to three, but most of their business is dinner, which is from five to nine. And the other establishments in this plaza are really not, um, operating much during those hours. So it should not be a conflict as park, as parking goes. There's, there's a pharmacy which is open till seven. It's Black Rock Pharmacy, but they do a lot of drive-through. They have a drive-through center if people aren't parking. There's a liquor store. The hours, I can't tell you exactly. Liquor store open till... They're open till, well, they are open till eight or nine to eight or nine to nine, so their customers are spread out in those hours. There's a nail salon, again, mostly daytime hours. And probably the busiest establishment there is a specialty Italian, uh, deli Sorrento's. And they close at four, um, during the weekend. Then on Sundays, they close at one, so there's no, not much of a conflict. So, not a lot of options for sushi in the area, so I think this would actually be a benefit to the community. We know of one other sushi, uh, restaurant on Black Rock Turnpike. It's on the northern end near the Merritt. This would be on the southern end of Black Rock. So we're requesting variance.
Thank you. Is there any questions? Go ahead, Jane.
The parking spaces that are in the back of the building, are those residential? Don't there apartments upstairs?
There are some apartment, you know, to be honest, I, there are apartments upstairs and maybe some offices. I don't have a lot of information on their parking.
The question is, do they have, do the residents who live there have their own lots that are designated?
There's parking in the front. There's parking in the back. There's more parking in the back in a municipal lot, um, for a nature area that's open to the town. I don't, I honestly don't know about the apartment. Don't know.
Any other questions?
This, um, I just have to remember from, I ask this for every parking request. It doesn't increase the required handicap parking for the space, correct? So they would maintain all necessary handicap requirement. We're only limiting standard parking.
Well, handicap spaces that's shared are, are there on what's required based on that stuff?
But that volume doesn't increase based on this request.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions? All right. Uh, is there anyone that's to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone in opposition to the application? All right, we're gonna close the hearing on number six, eighteen thirty-eight Black Rock Turnpike. Thank you. Our next, uh, item, um, is, uh, number seven. It appears that we should, we should call seven and eight together.
Yes, Chairman.
And, uh, number seven, uh, is six oh five Stillson Road Lot A, map one-two-three parcel ten. Petition of twenty-one Keeler Avenue LLC for a variance of the zoning regulations, section five point one point one, section five point two point one and two point seven, to reduce the minimum lot size, square and frontage from nine thousand three hundred seventy-five square feet, seventy-five square feet and seventy-five feet frontage, proposing six thousand seven hundred forty-five square feet, sixty square feet and sixty point three seven feet frontage. And section five point two point four, to reduce the street line setback from thirty feet, currently twenty-six point seven feet, proposing twenty-six point seven feet. Permission to establish a building lot to construct a one-story and two-story additions to an existing single-family dwelling premises A-zone. And number eight is six oh five Stillson Road Lot B, uh, map one-two-three parcel ten. Petition of twenty-one Keeler Avenue LLC for a variance of the zoning regulations, section five point one point one, to reduce the lot size and square from nine thousand three hundred seventy-five square feet and seventy-five square feet, proposing seven thousand eight hundred seventy square feet and sixty-five feet square. Permission to establish a building lot for a single-family dwelling premises A-zone. Attorney Fallon, you have both of these.
I do, Mr. Chairman. Uh, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, members of the public. For the record, my name is John Fallon. I'm an attorney here in Fairfield. And I'm pleased to be representing the property owner and the applicant, Mr. Joseph Capola. He is seated in the front row. Uh, I wanna say a few words about Joe because I think his local roots bear relevance to this application. He's a graduate of Sacred Heart University with a degree in finance, business administration, and a minor in Italian, I will have you know. His two brothers-in-law both attended Fairfield Prep. Uh, this family is very connected to the Fairfield area. They love it very much. In addition, Fairfield University has hired his company to restore some of the stone and brick buildings on the campus. And he and his brother were also hired by Sacred Heart University to construct the Student Center Building and restore the, the sidewalk. Joe's also worked on several residential and commercial building projects in Fairfield. So I take a little time to emphasize a few words about Joe, not only to give you some introduction to him, but as he faced this property, which is unique and we'll talk about in a minute, and the options that existed with regard to the development of this property. I think those local roots and his commitment to this community uh played a large role in the decisions that he made and that are now before you, subject to your review. Let's talk about the property first. The property is designated as six oh five Stillson Road. It is located in the resident A District, but it's significantly oversized, comprising fourteen thousand six hundred and fifteen square feet. Obviously, the zone contemplates a minimum lot area of nine thousand three hundred and seventy-five square feet. The property was created as two lots, designated lots one and two, as shown on a map entitled Property of John and Anna Zadrebek, Fairfield, Connecticut, dated November thirty, nineteen thirty-eight. And that map was duly recorded on the land records of the town of Fairfield. And you have a copy of that map attached to the application. It is noted as Exhibit A. It's also noted that the property, which is bounded, by the way, by Stillson Road to the left and Judge Street to the south, uh was created as two separate building lots, as I said, shown by the map. Indeed, if you look at the recorded deeds, which I've established and submitted as Exhibit Two, each and every time this property has been conveyed, it's been consistently conveyed with language that reads, and I quote, "All that certain piece or parcel of land situated in the town of Fairfield, county of Fairfield, state of Connecticut, being duly known and designated as lots one and two on the map of property of John and Andrew Vazdravik dated November thirty, nineteen thirty-eight." As I said, you have those deeds as part of this um package as Exhibit B. In addition, the two lots are shown as separate parcels on the town's assessor's map. That's map number one twenty-three. You also have a copy of the relevant portion of that map. And on this, on the town map, the town assessor's map, they're designated as parcels nine and ten. So as we start off the review here, it's important to know that these properties, these lots, these parcels were created as two separate lots by the filing of the map in nineteen thirty-eight. And in accordance with the town tax assessor's map, they've always been designated as two separate lots, lots nine and ten. And as I've said before, each and every time there's been a conveyance, it has referenced explicitly by reference to the nineteen thirty-eight map, the fact that there are two parcels here. As important, since the creation of these lots in nineteen thirty-eight and by the establishment of the filed maps, the existing one and one-half story structure, which is located at six oh five Stillson Road, and the improvements associated therewith are and have historically been located on that portion of the property designated as Lot One on the nineteen thirty-eight map and designated as parcel ten on the assessor's map. The portion of the parcel designated as Lot Two on the map and as parcel nine on the assessor's map has been maintained and held in an undeveloped state for purposes of future development as a single-family home. So that's the background with regard to how these lots came to be established. So let's talk about the application and and the decisions that my client made, subject to your review and approval, with regard to the development of this uniquely oversized parcel. We make the application for variances in order to establish a building lot for a single-family dwelling at the property, which would then be designated six seventeen Stillson Road. Now, as shown on the architectural plan submitted herewith, the new home that's proposed for construction will comply with all provisions of the zoning regulations as it relates to height, coverage, total floor area and setbacks. That's notwithstanding the variances we seek with regard to the reduction of the required lot area and square. In this case, we do seek a variance of section five point one point one to reduce the minimum lot size to seven thousand eight hundred and seventy square feet and the minimum square to sixty-five feet in order to allow this parcel to be utilized as a building lot. But the house to be built on the property will be totally conforming to the regulations. Similarly, it's Mr. Capola's intention to take the current house at six oh five and do a two-story additions to that property. Again, the structure, uh once the additions are completed, will comply with all provisions of the zoning regulations with respect to height, coverage, floor area and setbacks. The only variance that we seek there beyond the variance for lot area and shape is to reduce the street line setback from thirty feet to twenty-six point seven feet. However, as I pointed out, the current street setback, based upon the location of the existing porch, is already twenty-six point seven feet, so there'll be no increase in non-conformity in this respect. In order to facilitate this addition and to utilize this parcel as a separate building lot, we do seek a variance of section five point one point one to reduce the lot size to six thousand seven hundred and forty-five square feet and the square to sixty feet. We also seek a reduction in the lot frontage from seventy-five feet to sixty point three seven feet. Now, let's talk about, because it gets to, I think, the whole point of what we're trying to do here, the dwellings that will exist relative to this property, should you grant these variances. The current square footage of the existing house at six oh five is one thousand four hundred and thirty-three square feet. The proposed additions will increase the square footage to a modest two thousand one hundred and one square feet, very much in character with the surrounding neighborhood. The structure, once the additions are completed, will comply with the coverage requirements of the zone and will be at nineteen point seventy-two percent and the floor area requirements at thirty-nine point oh five percent. So the house will be two, twenty-one hundred square feet, and notwithstanding its reduced lot area, will comply with your regulations for purposes of coverage and F A R. The single-family residential structure to be constructed on the now vacant parcel, which would be known as six seventeen Stillson Road, excluding the garage, will total two thousand seven hundred and one habitable square feet. Again, a moderately sized house consistent with the character of the surrounding neighborhood. And again, notwithstanding the reduction in lot area, this new home will comply in all respect with the coverage requirements at nineteen point seven seven and the F A R requirement at thirty-nine point four zero. What we're talking about here are two homes of modest size, moderate size, twenty-one hundred square feet and twenty-seven hundred square feet, that are totally compliant with the zoning regulations, notwithstanding, as I said, the reduced area, which we asked you to approve. The previously submitted assessor's map showing the surrounding neighborhood confirms that due to the fact that most or many of these lots in the area were created by recordation of the previously sized map, map one twenty-three or similar maps, that the lots, in terms of their size and shape as we propose them, are consistent with the character of the neighborhood. This is the assessor's map, okay? This is inclusive of all of the homes that were within your area in terms of notice. And let me explain to you what the key shows here. All the lots in yellow are lots that are currently less than nine thousand three hundred and seventy-five square feet. And all the lots with the dots are lots that are less than, or have less than the seventy-five foot square. The point being that we have, because of the way this neighborhood was created, what we are proposing here is very much consistent with the overall character of a substantial portion of the neighborhood. On the side here, and I'll leave this with you, obviously, we're listing all of the properties that received notice pursuant to your requirement. With regard to those, what you're going to see here is that those that are noted with the dots were all established prior to nineteen forty-eight and fail to comply with regard to the lot area requirements. This is consistent, again, with the way the neighborhood was developed and when it was developed. And we offer it, again, in in consideration of our position that the neighborhood is substantially benefited by an approach that we are talking about here that would yield these two moderately sized houses as opposed to the alternative, which is not meant to scare anybody, but it's not what we want to do. If we combine these lots and establish in the zone a most unique fourteen thousand some odd square foot lot, then it would yield, totally within the context of the regulations, a house of over six thousand square feet. We feel strongly and honestly that that's not in our interest, nor is it in the interest of the neighborhood. And that's why we are here. We ask you to, as we turn in a minute to the legal underpinnings here, we ask you to consider whether prudent, thoughtful, sensitive development is better served by the request for the variances for lot area and square that we request, so that we can build a twenty-seven hundred square foot house on one lot and additions that will take the existing house to a still modest twenty-one hundred square feet. Or merge these, or keep them as merged, and build a six thousand square foot house in a neighborhood where respectfully, a six thousand square foot house doesn't belong, but would sell. Now, from a legal perspective, you have to look at section eight dash six A three of the statutes, as you know, and you must make two findings. That what is being proposed does not substantially affect the comprehensive zoning plan and that there are factors with regard to the lot and the property that the law recognizes as constituting hardship. So let's talk about that. With regard to the first aspect of the test, I've cited the Egan case, which you're very familiar with. The Egan case says that if the use to be allowed by a variance is consistent with other uses in the area and/or is a permitted use in the zone, then the first part of the test is met. Here, the variances that we request will simply provide that the original parcels, as established by recordation of the nineteen thirty-eight map and as shown on the tax assessor's map, can be utilized for the purposes of a single-family residence, as in fact has already been the case for many, many years, with regard to the existing house at six oh five Stillson Road. Single-family residences are, of course, permitted in the zone. The two proposed lots for single-family dwellings will be similar in size, shape and character with the size, shape and character of many other lots in the immediate and general area. And the homes to be constructed on those lots will be totally compliant with your zoning regulations and will be consistent with and in keeping in harmony with the character of the neighborhood. As previously indicated, the home to be constructed at six seventeen Stillson and the existing house at six oh five will comply with all of your regulations and are, in our mind, a far better alternative to the large as-of-right home that could be constructed. We hope that you will find that, most importantly, the granting of these variances will ensure that the dwelling to be constructed at the proposed six seventeen and the addition is going to be in keeping with the size and character of the overall neighborhood. And, as I said, is superior to what the as-of-right alternative would be. My client spent most of his Christmas holiday going door to door in the neighborhood, reviewing the plans with all the neighbors. And as a result of that, I have a petition which I filed electronically earlier today. What? It constitutes twenty signatures. And I'll leave you this second graphic as well. I'll bring it over so that you can see it. What it's color-coded to show you is that this, all the homes referenced with the orange arrow are homes wherein the petition was signed that you had. The ones in purple, Mr. Capola advised me, that he was able to make contact with and that although these people, these folks determined that they were not comfortable signing the petition, they did say to him, and he represents, that they have no opposition. But the big thing was, and is in my mind, the very exhaustive effort that he made relative to seeing the neighbors over the holiday. There were some people that he went to twice and even three times, recognizing it was the holiday season, but he was unable to see them. But substantially, when you look at this map here, and and this, of course, is our subject, you have, I think, a pretty good indication of how hard he worked. And again, this map also superimposes what I showed you before, the lots that are already non-conforming as the lot area and the lots that are non-conforming with respect to the square. And they also show, sort of duplicate this all puts it together, the the lots that were established, actually, that's on the other one, that are currently not pre-existing and non-conforming based upon either their existence prior to the adoption of zoning regulations or variances. Now, with regard to that... Where's Anna when I need her, you know? This is a list of the specific people who received notices relative to this particular matter. Again, what it shows is those properties highlighted in very, in in yellow are pre-existing and would require variances for either square or lot area. And those highlighted in pink have already received variances with regard to aspects of the zoning regulations to accommodate the development that is there now. I don't offer that as some sort of a precedential issue. I simply think it reinforces what is obviously our main point here, which is what we are trying to do is to develop the property generally in accordance with the zoning regulations in a manner that's consistent and harmonious with the neighborhood. We could do that with a single-family house, but we just think that's too large for the neighborhood. Now, with regard to hardship, and I cite this in my material, the case that's really controlling here is the case I cite, Horowitz versus Town of Waterford, which is a Connecticut Supreme Court case. In Horowitz, the court was confronted with a very similar situation. And what that was is a lot created by the filing of a recorded map on the land records prior to the adoption of the zoning regulations that was subsequently rendered non-conforming when zoning regulations were adopted. Same question that we have here. The Supreme Court found that it would be an unconstitutional taking to apply the adopted regulations to these pre-existing lots in question, which had always been maintained as a buildable parcel. The court's decision was in keeping with, and they cited, a long group of established cases, I cite as well, for the proposition that applying zoning regulations... cases, I cite as well, for the proposition that applying zoning regulations to property, when it is applied to property and found to be so severe as to amount to a practical compensation, that establishes hardship for purposes of granting variances to allow the lots to be utilized. That's the case here. The Waterford case was the same thing. Lot was created by a filed map, subsequently zoning regulations were adapted, the lot was always maintained independently. The Supreme Court said that the variants that were requested to legitimize the lot should be granted. So I think we do have a very strong hardship basis here. So at the end of the day, what we're proposing here with regard to these two parcels that were created back in '38 when this map was established, and which the town has recognized in its assessors map to be two separate parcels, is to try to develop them in a way that is consistent with and harmonious with the surrounding neighborhood. What it will do is allow for the construction of a moderately-sized new home at 617 Stilson Road, totally compliant with the regulations, and an attractive addition to the existing residence at 605 Stilson, again, totally consistent with the regulations. The homes will be moderately sized and will conform to the character of the neighborhood. The request, I believe, satisfies the established requirements of Section 8-6, and it will not have any negative impact on the comprehensive plan. Indeed, the construction, as we propose, of the two moderately-sized, single-family homes is preferable to the option that I've shared with you, which would be to construct a fairly massive, single-family home of almost 6,000 square feet. And as I said, hardship is established and recognized by the standards of the Horowitz case. So that's really our presentation. We think that this is a classic case where the authority and the equitable authority of this board should be well-applied, because in so doing, since one of the statutory standards is doing something that is consistent and not inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, then this approach to the development of these parcels not only has the strong legal underpinnings it has, but it just makes practical sense. And as I said, my client did work very hard to make the neighborhood aware, and as you can see from the petition that was submitted, we received very substantial support, especially from neighbors proximate to the property, those that were notified and would have most interest. The reason that happened is self-evident, I think. That is, they agreed. They'd rather see this house improved and the new home constructed than to see one large house that would stick out rather substantially and be unique to the neighborhood. So we'd be pleased to answer any questions that you might have, and certainly any questions members of the public may have.
All right, thank you, Attorney Fallon. Board, have any questions?
Yes.
Go ahead, Jane. Of course.
So this variance application is to split the lots, or establish two separate building lots, and... But it does not include an application for the new house to be built?
No, because the new house will be totally compliant with the zoning regulation.
So is that a condition of this application?
Absolutely. I mean, there's no variances being sought with regard to the new house.
I just want to make sure that...
If anybody wanted to change their mind about that, they'd have to come back and see you, and this applicant will not.
I just want to make sure that that is a condition.
Absolutely.
So if that lot is sold, you know, next week, the new owner will have to...
Would have to comply with the regulations. And in fact, if the existing house were sold and a new owner wanted to tear it down or make additions and renovations, he or she also would have to comply with all provisions of the regulations. There's no provision here for anything beyond that, except the street setback, which, as I said, the current setback from the street from the porch is 26.7. We'd like to maintain that.
So you're saying it's a condition of approval for both lots, that any construction is going to comply with...
All aspects of the regulations, except the 26.7.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Attorney Fallon, I know that there was an email that came in with some comments, and there might be other comments, so reserve...
Yeah, that's what I was intending.
Okay. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application? Applications, I'm sorry. It's 605 Stilson Road, Lot A and Lot B. All right. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to the application, 605 Stilson Road, Lot A and Lot B?
Yes.
Yes, Matt, just go up to the podium there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right. Thank you for taking the time with this property. My name's Mary Ann Horvath. I am the daughter of Mary Horvath, whose grandparents, John Lujek and Mary Lujek, bought the property from the Zadoviches back in 1940. And the property was... I just want the record to show what really has always been intended for this property through our family. You know, there was mention of development way back in 1940. The only thing that was being developed back then may have been the Merritt Parkway, not even, because my grandfather worked on the Merritt Parkway. But this house was purchased to be a home for my grandmother, my grandfather, and their son and daughter. My mother was here, and my uncle's still alive. When I got married in 2015... 16? When did we get married?
2006.
I'm sorry. I'm suffering from double pneumonia, and I've been really... And Mom has bronchitis, and we've been sick for the whole New Year's, so I'm...
Oh, we're not contagious?
Not contagious, anyway. So, my husband and I were married in 2006. We bought the property, which was my grandparents' property, from my uncle, John Lujek, Androsia Lujek. Mom still had her name on the property all till the end. We lived there. The property has always been considered one to my family, the house and the extra so-called lot.
And the lot was supposed to be a garden, a vegetable garden?
Yes. My grandmother, when I was a child, she had actually two gardens, which... But my grandmother loved gardening, fruits, vegetables, you name it. So there was a garden on the Stilson roadside that was quite large, and then there was a garden on the Judd Street side that was a little bit smaller. And in fact, years ago, when... I have pictures, but I mean, I can pass them around to show there was basically no houses or anything in that area. I'll submit them to the council. But there was horses coming and eating out of the garden. And then when my mother got married, they never offered or suggested that they develop that lot as a house for my parents. They bought a separate lot from Bodie, what was his last name?
Her name, Trotnick.
Trotnick. And that is the lot that is 688 Judd Street, which I sold the house to move in to care for my mother, who's 98. They bought that lot, built their house, a pre-sig house from Fairfield, Denver, and she's lived there ever since she was... After she was married. That's over 65, 70, almost... That's over 68 years?
What?
You've lived there, 688 Judd.
Sixty, sixty.
Yep. So I'm 63 now. So I just want people to understand that we have never thought about subdividing, developing, whatever, whatever. If we were, why weren't my grand...
We're trying to keep the old circle.
The neighborhood has changed.
Find the line.
It's a shame that... I've lived in Fairfield 60 years. I love Fairfield. I love the people in Fairfield. And I mean, it's just unfortunately, I feel that they're going to build two houses, which are fine. I understand progress. But then when they build the garage in back of the new house, how is that going to be right up against my fence where I live now and block our light from the living room and things like that? So I do consider that. My mom probably has limited time left, and I really want her to enjoy where she's lived for her whole life. When my husband and I sold the lot, the house, we have been, which we had made many, many improvements on over the years and spent quite a bit of money, we're now putting the money back in my mom's house so she can live the way she used to have a beautiful house. But anyway, that's not your concern. So I'm really kind of confused because we had the house on the market in... When did it go on the market? March?
Yes.
With Vander Blue Company, and it was on the market for several months, and first of all, I didn't think the agency was very good, whatever. Happened, happened. So...
I said originally, no.
So anyway, I just really don't understand how it always considered a two-parcel lot because this is my grandparents' house and my home for...
If it was two parcels, we would have paid twice on...
Yeah.
On taxes, but we've only had one.
And...
And to me, I don't know about you guys, but for me, you know, of course, I signed this, okay? But that was stupid of me because what he was presenting to me was either or a house. It was either that house or that house. That's why I signed it. I'm like, oh, okay, that's not that bad, you know, developing, bring it up. But he says it's not a threat. It's sure a threat to me that if you don't give them the rights to do this, they're going to build that gargantuan house that doesn't belong there. You guys know this in your heart.
And if you look at our neighborhood, our house would be a dwarf compared to a 688. Bob Smith, who's a fireman, he added on to his house a number of years ago. It's a gargantuan. I mean, it's an old house. I know that. All old houses need a lot of work, but it's not keeping into the community, the spirit, and I think the what... My neighbors are here. How many people can say that they know their neighbors and have a familiar relationship with neighbors nowadays? I don't even know my neighbors half the time, and that's a loss for our town. That's a loss for our community. I mean, yes, my heart is in this very much because it was my grandparents' house. My husband and I went through bankruptcy back in 2000 and...
What, '10?
2010. We went Chapter 13. We paid off our debt because my husband was electrified at work and lost his job. We had many times where we could have sold the house and probably made more money, and that house is so dear to me and part of my life and my heartstrings. I'm sorry, I'm still emotional about it, but there were many times that we told the bank, my husband lost his job, well, you can't afford the property. Well, I did everything I possibly could because I wanted the property. My uncle, John Lujek, who lives in Fairfield, who's ill lately and hasn't been getting out, I questioned him, sent him an email, and wanted to know his thoughts on the property when he was a young man. Here's his response that I got. And I'll read you the questions that I spoke to him, and we also submit copies to you.
I mean, my family's been here since 1650. I'm a moron, and my whole family's seen this town grow, but it's just getting too much. They're putting the houses on these little pieces of property that don't need...
And also...
And it's just getting out of hand.
Also, when my husband and I lived at 605 Stilson, we never parked in our garage or our driveway because he goes to work at like 6:00 in the morning, trying to get...
And he can't get out.
Trying to get out, and then between like 3:30 and 6:30, it's ridiculous. There have been traffic accidents on the corner of Stilson and Judd, which is right where that house was going to be sitting, I think. I don't want to have anyone injured. There have been a number of accidents on our property over the years.
Ms. Horvath, we're not traffic control.
No, I know, I know. So let me sort of...
We're talking about the house and the property and why it shouldn't be split back into two lots.
Okay. So here's my uncle wrote me back. Our parents never had any intention to develop or subdivide. While my sister and I owned it, someone offered to buy the empty lot, which we turned down. There was never any talk about developing. It was a house to live in. While my parents owned it, it was never any talk about developing or subdividing. And I think someone had over the years, because we were renting it for a number of years before I moved in, that people wanted to buy it, and the zoning was wrong. So that just, you know, I don't... I know they're asking for zoning changes.
In 2006, I thought about it, and the town told me, no, absolutely not. You can't develop the lot.
I lived in that house originally. My parents had it built. And after I was married, I moved in with my... We lived with my parents for five years to try to save money so we could buy a house. My father never offered to sell us the extra lot. He knew as what... He wanted the open lot. He didn't want anything built on there. And he was going to buy his lot next door to them, the lot on the corner of Stilson Road, and which is now Melville Lane. And the Zadversis would not sell it because they had other plans for developing their property. And we... The property in back of Stilson Road, our property now, was owned by another woman, and she was having a problem on the property, and my husband went to help her. So she asked him if he was interested in buying the property. So he said, oh, yeah. So this way, we had the property in back of my parents. And it was very convenient, and my father never, ever thought about selling the property because he wanted to have open space because when we moved to Fairfield, it was country. There were no stores, nothing.
I just wanted to show you some pictures of the property, and you don't have to worry about it.
And Stilson Road, you can walk out of the street anytime you want, and nobody's coming by. And it was beautiful. Now, there's so many houses on Stilson Road, you can't get out of your driveway.
So we just really feel that, unfortunately, I don't want to say I've been misled, but it's just a difficult situation to be in because, obviously, it's been part of my life for many years, and I really want to see the right thing done with it. I have, and being with open space, I have never seen more wild animals because they've developed all the wetlands or whatever you want to call it.
We have never told it was too much.
Never. We never, ever. But anyway, deer have been killed on this property many times. We also have deer coming over at night, you know, constantly, and now there's foxes. There's coyotes in the neighborhood. So this is a huge problem.
Yeah, that's not real.
I understand, but okay. I'll stop next, Mark.
I'm done.
You're done? Okay.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Horvath.
Thank you.
Opened up.
But I do have other pictures with the gardens in my grandparents' house. Unfortunately, I've been really sick since New Year's Eve with double pneumonia, so I'm kind of not bad about it yet.
But I am, again, putting another house.
And the large house, it's just not bad.
We understand.
Very much.
We understand.
The large house.
Remember what I said before? The only people to speak are sitting at this table and standing at that podium. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition to this application? Attorney Fallon, you have an opportunity to address the Horvath comment. Also, there was, we did receive an email from Beverly and Paul Dyer. They're on Mayfair on that.
Yeah, Mr. and Mrs. Dyer's email, as I remember, was rather succinct. They're just opposed to it.
They're just opposed without any explanation.
So I sort of, I'll address again...
You can address it if you...
Redundantly.
If you need to. As we said, we don't need to be redundant.
This is a unique situation. First of all, let me say they have ultimate respect for the Horvaths. I respect their family tradition, and I respect certainly their right to speak in this forum. Having said that, I haven't done this for too many years, this is a unique situation. They sold the house to Mr. Coppola. They signed the petition that you have, and at the end of the day, Mr. Coppola, because he's the kind of person he is, and again, I'm not trying to make him blush or, you know, lay it on because he's my client, but you can kind of see by the effort that he made going in the neighborhood, when he first spoke to the Horvaths, one of the things that he spoke about and agreed to and said he was extremely sensitive to was their family heritage, their commitment to their family home at 605. And he told them he wouldn't tear it down, and he told... And he told them that he wanted to do an addition. And he told them when he did the addition, he'd share the plans and he would be sensitive to the character and history of the house. And they said, thank you very much. They signed the contract and took his money. So it's a little surprising, it's a little unusual, but the fact of the matter is, it is what it is. I will say that to the extent that people are concerned or that the Horvaths express concern about the nature of the neighborhood and, and providing people with the same opportunity that Ms. Horvath had when she moved to that neighborhood and that house so many decades ago, I would suggest that this application, measured by that standard, is a very good application. Because if we wanna talk about keeping and ensuring that young, younger families and whatnot have the opportunity to live in Fairfield, have the opportunity to live in this neighborhood, I think we're far better off with two moderately sized houses, twenty-one hundred and twenty-seven hundred square feet, than the as-of-right alternative that we are looking to avoid. I understand that the Horvaths may say, and I don't know about that, that the family never considered dividing, uh, the property. Well, that, I accept that. But the fact is, the map back in nineteen thirty-eight showed two parcels. For the last sixty years, the town assessor's map shows two parcels. And every time the property is changed hand under deed, it has referred to two parcels. So it really doesn't matter, I guess, but at the end of the day, I don't think it makes much sense to say nobody ever considered that there were two lots because potentially that was on the map, it was on the tax assessor's records, it was in the dis- the legal descriptions. But that doesn't matter. What really matters here is whether or not this neighborhood is better off with a single compliant fourteen thousand square foot lot and a six thousand square foot house or the two houses that we brought to your attention tonight, twenty-one hundred, twenty-seven hundred square feet. I, again, respect the Horvaths' right to speak, but I do speak in this hearing for the silent majority. And those are the people who signed the petition. Those are the people who Mr. Coppola went door to door to door over Christmas week to show them the plan. Twenty of them signed that petition. I guess nineteen now because the Horvaths signed it, but they're here. That, to me, is indicative of the fact that common sense and good judgment dictate that in fact, the alternative that Mr. Coppola has committed himself to, subject to your approval, is the right one. It's the right one from the standpoint of good land use planning. It's the right one from the good sense of neighborhood sensitivity. And it's the right one for the community because of the housing, the type of housing inventory that'll be created. So, um, that's really about all I have. I've been overly redundant, but I do feel strongly that this is a case where you have a local builder whose roots are in the community and he did this the right way. He approached this the ri- right way. My God, in the era that we're living in, and I'm not saying this critically, but, you know, fourteen thousand square feet on Stillson Road, somebody mentioned before an eight dash thirty G. This is not that. This is a man who values his reputation in the community, who sought to engage the neighbors and engage the Horvaths and satisfied them of his intentions to the extent that they signed the contract and sold them the property. So I think he should be commended by that. I think that the variances are, are strongly, uh, appropriate. And from a legal perspective, I've already covered that, this situation and the, uh, the, the case that I cited you, clearly give you that authority. And in this case, I think you'd be exercising your discretionary authority in a most proper way for this neighborhood. And the vast majority of the neighbors concur. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Fallon. We're gonna close the hearing now. No, 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 the, uh, the person that has to prove their case has the last word. All right, that's why it's a rebuttal, it's not a back and forth. I explained that at the original. We're gonna close the hearing. We're gonna clo- sir? What did I say before? I cut off Mr. Coppola from speaking? The only people that talk, if you gotta be standing there and I have to invite... I wanna be standing there, I have to invite you there or you have to be up here. I'm closing the hearing. I went over the order on how it's supposed to go. I'm sorry you're not satisfied with that, but that's, I went over the order and I explained it in detail at, to everyone that's here on how the process works. And when someone has an application, they get the last word when there's a rebuttal. I didn't cut you off. I didn't cut anyone off. And I never do unless you go too far from the point. So we're gonna close the hearing on number seven and number eight, six oh five Stillson Road, Lot A and Lot B. I try to be fair and I cut people off when they speak out of turn. And that's my right as a chairman. We're gonna take a five minute break and we'll reconvene the public, uh, the, uh, executive session thereafter. We could have a seat. We're gonna come back to order on, uh, Zoning Board of Appeals, January five. We have a seat? Call back to order, Town of Fairfield Zoning Board of Appeals, January five, our working session. We have several items on the agenda. Again, after a public hearing, uh, first item is two four four Greenfield Street, Town of Fairfield application, Mr. Barnhart presented this. It's, uh, to, uh, create building lot for two, uh, family dwellings. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian, sir, a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jane. And, uh, discussion?
Much needed.
It's a good idea.
Good agenda.
A good, good partnership, uh, as well.
Yep.
Any other discussion? All right, bring it to a vote. Elise, you're first because you're from the left.
Yes.
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 Yay.
Yes? That passes, number two, eight one two Hillside Road. Petition, Kenny McDonald, uh, Ms. DeSantis, uh, presented this. Uh, construct attic dormers, entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian, sir, a second?
Second.
Uh, Elise, thank you. Anyone notice I typically ignore my vice chairman when he tries to second something? All right, uh, discussion?
I think it's absolutely in keeping with the, uh, with the neighborhood, the house two doors down.
It's a pre-existing.
All right, bring it to a vote, Elise?
Yes.
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 Yes? That passes, number three, twenty-six forty-four Bronson Road, uh, Bronson Meadows. Uh, Mr. Flaherty presented this. Uh, it's to, uh, add to the accessory, uh, dwelling, uh, the groomers', uh, groom's quarters. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Thank you, Terry. No one else jumped in, so you get it. Uh, and also, we, on that other application, this one, we had Ms. Bowman, who was in favor of it as well. Uh, discussion?
I have a, there's no hardship. I asked specifically, and a hardship has to be tied to the property, not the needs of the people who live there. And there is no hardship.
My understanding is it's removing a nonconformity. It's alleviating a nonconformity because it's a, a too small of a structure.
Um, that was my question. Is this now creating, uh, an actual accessory dwelling unit?
Well, they'll, they'll, it's already there, they allowed it, but this is removed in the...
It was allowed in two thousand...
Right. They allowed three.
Two thousand and sixteen, but they only wanted a small one. Uh, and now they want it to be...
I just wanna make the right size.
Just barely over.
Barely over.
So does it in fact...
That removes that nonconformity.
Okay. But there's no hardship.
Except that there is some case law that says removing a nonconformity is a basis for hardship.
Okay, but I asked the question, I wanted to hear the answer.
All right.
Yes.
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 Yes. That's granted. Uh, number four, one eighty-six White Oak Road, uh, Ms. Kent presented the application for an addition. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Brian, sir, a second?
Second.
Thank you, Elise. Okay, discussion?
Again, it's an undersized lot.
We have it, she, Ms. Kent was prepared for your question. She, she gave the hardship before you even asked her about it. All right.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. All right, that's approved. Thank you, Ms. Kent. Um, number five, uh, five ninety-three Roland Road, uh, petition, uh, the Lullos. Uh, Savardis, uh, Vattista presented the application for the in-ground pool. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Elise.
Well, don't.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jane. All right, uh, discussion?
As long as they can go swimming, they can have a go.
I just wanted to be clear that the equipment's added that grade, which doesn't count as... Does, does the equipment itself count as coverage or stuff?
No.
That doesn't. Okay, thank you.
We get into a problem when we have elevated.
Yes.
Right, but some, like, we've had, we've talked before, some people, some towns considering, you know, fire pits. Swingsets, that's what we don't, just making sure.
Glad my fire pit's below that and I don't have a swing set anymore. All right, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Uh, that passes, number six, uh, eighteen thirty-eight Black Rock Turnpike. Um, application for, uh, retail space to a restaurant. This is over near the Black Rock Pharmacy, that little shopping center. And the, uh, Turnpike Spirits, I think it's called. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian, sir, a second?
Second.
Thank you, Terry, discussion?
I don't have enough information about the parking for the residents in the back. And I don't know if, you know, if, if the sushi restaurant patrons are gonna not line up that long, they're gonna pull them on back and come and park and hit there.
Well, there's a, there's two parking areas behind.
Right, one is the town. Isn't that what it is? And it's lower, it's not a town lot?
I've never seen anyone but people in the apartments that park into that separate because it doesn't go through. The people in the apartments, they don't, I go, I know the, I go to the pharmacy. So there's always plenty of parking in that parking lot. And they don't like it to drive through that. Because the one, the front one closest to the building is the, you can drive through it and get over to the side road. The other one is just dedicated to lot. And I usually only see four or five cars parked there. And I don't even see the, that one behind it filling. And I never see the front completely full. Some of it has a beautiful, classic, old station wagon that I grew up, like, like I grew up with, it parks in the front. I wonder, I wanna know who that, has that car, I could be one of the...
There's, there's, there's no, there's, I've never been in that lot. I get my hair cut there, to the pharmacy, all that stuff. I've never seen a shortage of parking there. And I think, like she said, all but one of the businesses closes before six.
Yeah, I agree.
If I beg man barber shop, they'll stay there until like six oh five.
There are fifty-two spots in common.
Yeah.
And di- varying hours of the businesses, including the proposed sushi restaurant. I think there'll be adequate parking for, for everybody.
All right.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes? All right, uh, number seven, um, we have to take them separately, uh, seven and eight. But seven, six oh five Stillson Road, Lot A, uh, Keeler Avenue LLC. Attorney Fallon presented the application. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Jane. All right, uh, discussion?
Isn't there a condition now attached to this application?
We don't need to put a, I didn't put a condition because we don't need to put a condition that they have to comply with the zoning regs that they didn't see a variance to.
Well, it was presented that there would be a condition so that any house that was built would be conforming to zoning.
They'd have to do that anyway.
Right.
Yeah.
It's, it's a condition for the sake of the condition. Like, if anybody built anything an inch out of conformity, they'd have to come here anyway.
Well, what hap- okay, what, devil's advocate, it happens if in ten years, somebody comes back, it's an undersized lot and they wanna build, um, something and they want a variance and they say, well, it's an undersized lot, you have to give it to me and then they need a variance.
Oh, that's our discretion.
They'd have to get, get a variance.
They'd have to get a variance, they'd have to come before us.
Well, it was presented, though, that the condition was that it would be...
Do you wanna add a, I mean, I...
It doesn't, but...
I'm unclear whether that is a, was a condition presented or...
But we don't operate, we don't operate on precedent. We take every case by case, so...
I think Attorney Fallon said that is a condition because they're not seeking a variance. The only variance that they're seeking are two for this particular. And it's the lot size, the square and the frontage, which is kind of one. And, uh, and then the street side, setback. Because they wanna keep that.
Okay.
But he's not seeking any other. So he can't go build over twenty, Mr. Coppola can't go build over twenty percent.
Without another variance?
Yeah.
Okay. I, then, okay, then it was...
No, he, he, I mean, I don't need, we don't need to be like us saying you have to build pursuant to building code. We don't have to add that as a condition.
Okay, that's a condition to me, but...
I don't, I mean, you know...
Okay.
If you wanna put it as a condition, it's, uh, uh, two belts and one suspender condition.
Well, what...
We'd have to move to amend this to add the condition. I just don't think it's necessary because they cannot be in violation of the regulations if he tries to build something that is taller than the regulations, that is, uh, closer to the side, that is closer to the back, that is, uh, more lot coverage. If he wants to bump something out, can't relieve and have more FAR, can't do it.
Right. But, okay, I'm just anticipating when we're not on the board and somebody applies and they're, they will say, oh, it's an undersized lot, I need a variance. And it will never be remembered that it was discussed here today that a condition would be they would never apply for a variance for a house on that property.
The condition wouldn't prevent the request of a variance anyway, would it?
Well, that's what it seemed to me that Attorney Don was suggesting.
I think somebody could come back if we put this condition. I think someone could come back and ask for us to vary.
The condition.
That condition.
Okay, all right, fine, okay.
Yeah, it'd be, because that's just saying you're gonna comply with the zoning regs.
We've, we've imposed conditions before that similar kinds of things happen.
No, no, not, not, not a condition that you're gonna comply with the rest of the building pursuant to the building code. We've applied other conditions that have particular, to that property to do certain things, to appease neighbors, a condition to put trees, to put different things like that. We haven't, we haven't put conditions on, we can't put a condition on the use. That, that's Supreme Court. Uh, we, we put conditions on other things, other parts of the project to kind of, you know, make good neighbors. But I don't, I've never had a condition since I've been on the board where it says, you can never do, and I haven't even looked, I understand what you're saying now, that you could never do anything to this property and seek another variance.
Right.
I don't think we could ever put that condition. I think that would be an illegal condition. I don't, I don't, I haven't researched it, but I don't think we could ever do that.
You're the lawyer.
No, I'm chairman, I'm not the lawyer for the board.
All right.
All right, just, just continuing on discussion. Are you satisfied? No, I understand what you're saying.
I, okay.
I appreciate that.
I, it was presented one way, but you're saying we can't abide by the way it's presented.
I, I don't think that's the intent, that Attorney Fallon, we can't ask questions because this is our discussion. I don't think that is as intent, I think it intended that we're, we're not trying to do anything and, and Mr. Coppola's not gonna come back here to get another variance because he decides that he wants to put a, a bigger front.
Understood, I mean, we have long memories.
A bigger deck.
We have long memories.
You know, uh, I don't, I don't know, and I don't think Mr. Decker would say, oh, yeah, go ahead, you got a brilliant shot. I think Mr. Decker would probably say, no, I don't think you should do that, uh, uh, when, if that ever came up. But I don't think Attorney Fallon was agreeing to a condition that this piece of property would never, ever seek another variance for any future construction.
That was my understanding.
Although that's exactly what he said. But I don't know if you...
I don't think that's what he said. I mean, but I don't think we could do that.
Okay.
Um, discussion, uh, on this. And I appreciate the Horvaths and I appreciate their, their thoughts. And I agree, they probably never intended, if you could buy a second lot, never would intend it. But the problem that I have on the issue of, of their opposition is that, you know, one of their comments is someone even offered to buy the empty lot.
So there are some...
So I, I... So I, I, and I, I think you saw me write that down when, when I said that. And when I look at the maps, they're not trying to do something, which we have seen people try to do, is that you have a piece of property, you have two lots that are brought together. Um, and they put the house almost over on one lot, but they extend over that lot line because they want to have a little bit bigger. They want to have two lots in this, in where all these small lots. And I've seen this several times since I've been on the board. And then they come back and they want to put that, and they have to move the lot line from the original because the house, they want to keep that house.
Mm-hmm.
They're not doing that here.
Right.
This is, and I look back at the map, I compared it to the, the keeping that same sixty foot wide back on Lot A, sixty foot wide back on Lot B, keeping the exact same original lot lines. Uh, and I, 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 I respect that they would like to keep it, but I think this is a proper fit for this, this neighborhood, for this area. Um, uh, and I think it's a proper way to develop this. And they're not seeking any other variances. So they're not looking to say, hey, we want to put what would be a nine thousand allowed, square foot allowed house there. No, we want to put what will, what will fit for lot coverage and floor variation on sixty-seven hundred.
Right. Right. They're complying with everything else.
Which, which you like.
Yes.
So I think it, it, I, I, I don't think I'd be favoring it if Attorney Fallon says, yeah, now we want, uh, lot coverage and FAR. I think I would be a little, I'd be, I'd be aligned, and I think I know what your position would be.
Right.
Uh, so I, I'm, I'm, I'm favor of that. I respect the people's opposition, but I'm in favor of this one. Any other discussion?
Yes.
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 Yes. Number eight, six oh five, Stilson Road, Lot B. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Elise. Discussion?
Uh, I think what they're offering to build, what they, what they're considering to build is in the neighborhood and everything else. And I'm actually thrilled to see that the large bush, the section of trees, uh, possibly reduced visibility, I think will actually improve, uh, from Stilson to Judd. But, you know, as much as I appreciate the history lesson and I enjoyed learning about that, you know, once you sign it, you sign it.
We, we aren't, we aren't traffic.
Exactly.
But, uh, uh, and, uh, for the same reasons. I mean, they're keeping the existing and they're keeping and they're existing the pre, the original lot line for this, uh, for the two lots that were sold way back when. And they're abiding by the lot coverage and FAR for a seven, for seventy-eight hundred square feet.
Yep.
Which is important. All right, Elise?
Yes.
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 Yes. That passes. Thank you, uh, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you, everyone, for your participation. I really appreciate it. We're closed the hearing. Zoning Board of Appeals.